Good evening. My name is Brandon Monk and I serve as Chair of the Frederick County School Board. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, April the 25th, and I will call this meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. Are there any amendments?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Hummer.
I would like to ask to make an amendment to the agenda to include the approval of the minutes from the April 21st, 2023 school board retreat to the consent agenda. A copy of the minutes from the meeting have been placed at your seats.
All right, so Dr. Hummer and staff have requested that we amend the agenda to add the minutes from the April 21st meeting to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, may I also make a move for an amendment to the agenda to add board member comments at the bottom before we adjourn?
Sure, so we...
So there'd be two.
Okay, so can we get...we'll do the First Amendment first, if that's okay, Mr. Lake?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Hester, move. Is there a...
Second.
Mr. Atkins, second. Any discussion? Seeing none of those in favor of amending the agenda to add the April 21st board minutes to the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries. Mr. Lake?
Move to add board member comments at the bottom, probably replacing item N, board member comments, and then item O for adjournment.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been made and properly seconded to add board member comments and then move down adjournment. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an amended agenda. Are there any further amendments? All right, all in favor...do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, motions been made and properly seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the county school board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to consult with legal counsel regarding related legal matters that require the provision of legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.237-11A8, and to review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, administrative leave, dismissals, resignations, information only, substitutes, and the evaluation of the superintendent pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.237-11A1, and to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.237-11A2, and I do so move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the board to move into closed session for the reasons that the vice chair mentioned. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're in closed session. We're convened approximately 7:00 PM.
I move that the board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene from closed session. Any discussion? All in none, we'll proceed by voting. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are reconvened.
I move that, to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to certify of closed session. This requires a confirmation. Madam Clerk, we're ready.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, we have two motions coming out of closed session. I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the school superintendent. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries.
And I move to approve the release of students A and B from compulsory attendance for religious reasons.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the release of students A and B from compulsory attendance for religious reasons. It has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, next on our agenda is a moment of silence, and we'd like to do so this evening in memory of Joe Carbaugh, who was a bus aide and bus driver and a member of our nutritional services staff. And so please join me in that moment of silence in memory of Mr. Carbaugh. Thank you. All right, please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, next portion is our student and staff recognition. Dr. Hummer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. First up, we have a student recognition that I would like to call up Joey up to the front here. So congratulations. Come on up. I'm going to read a little something about you, then we're going to take a picture, okay? So come on up. So congratulations, yeah, just right up front here. Thank you. Good to see you, Joey. Congratulations to Red Bud Run Elementary School student Joey Gill, whose artwork called "Joey" took first place in elementary school category at the Virginia School Boards Association's Spring Regional Art Contest for the Valley Region. Joey's winning artwork will be framed and displayed in the Virginia School Board Association's office in Charlottesville. And if I'm not mistaken, it's right here behind me, so let's give him a round of applause. I'm going to have the chair and myself come down. I'm going to present a certificate, and if the parents want to take a picture, and our staff, that would be great. Come on down.
Yes, congratulations, Joey. Unfortunately, the School Board Association has that, and we aren't able to put it up on the school board now, but I'm sure it'll return to us at some point. And well done, congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, may I add, I was at the meeting, and I will tell you that there was some stiff competition from all over the region. There was representation there from 16 different school divisions, and so quite the accomplishment. Well done.
Awesome job.
All right, and thank you for being here tonight. Our vice chair shared with me that I missed the consent agenda portion, and I'm a little off tonight, so I appreciate that. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, the consent agenda, for those that are following, we did add an item and amended earlier, the April 21st school board meeting minutes, to that consent agenda. It's been made and seconded to approve as part of this package in the consent agenda. Any discussion on the consent agenda itself?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
We also added board member comments to the agenda?
That's correct, but this is a motion on the consent agenda. Any discussion around the consent agenda? All right, all in favor of approving as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have a consent agenda before us. Mr. Atkins, you are correct. We did add board member comments at the end, for those that are following along, and I appreciate that. All right, now we will...I will turn it over to you, Dr. Hummer, for the next portion of our staff...student and staff recognition.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Hester, we good?
We're good. Yep, thank you, Dr. Hummer.
Okay. All right, so I am very excited to announce two new additions to our staff. The first is the appointment of Shane Goodwin as the school division's Assistant Superintendent for Administration, if you don't mind coming on up. Mr. Goodwin brings a great deal of experience in working with staff, students, and their families to this position. In addition to his most recent experience as Director of Human Resources and Communications, Mr. Goodwin has 15 years of experience as a school-level administrator. Mr. Goodwin will begin in this position on June 1st, and please join me in welcoming Mr. Goodwin to this position.
If I may.
Please, please.
Members of the board, Dr. Hummer, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the trust you've placed in me to take this position. I'm very excited about getting to know each one of you, and also all of our students and families and community members here in Frederick County, and I look forward to working together. So thank you again for this amazing opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
In addition, I'm also very excited and pleased to announce the appointment of Katie Frakely, if you don't mind coming on up. Katie is our new Executive Director of Human Resources. She has 20 years of experience in the HR profession, as well as prior experience as a school board member. She will begin in the position on May 15th, so please join me in welcoming her to Frederick County Public Schools. We're very excited to have you.
Thank you so much. I am thrilled to be here and can't thank you guys enough for the warm welcome I've already received from everyone. Really excited to hit the ground running and be a part of this team. So thank you so much. Can't wait.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the board, we'd like to welcome both of you. Excited to get to work with you. We've reviewed resumes and recommendations, and excited for Dr. Hummer to continue to build out his team and have you a part of Frederick County Public Schools and our family here. So thank you and congratulations. All right. All right, so I'm told that there are no citizen or staff comments. So anyone that would like to speak on a topic this evening? No one has signed up. All right, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is reports, and Dr. Hummer, Superintendent of Schools.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have superintendent reports that I'm going to report out on a couple items, and then I'm going to go down to the podium and present the budget as it stands, and then we'll have a conversation later this evening.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. So first, thank you, Mr. Chair, for commemorating the moment of silence for Mr. Joe Carbaugh. Mr. Carbaugh worked as a bus driver for FCPS from 2011 until retirement in 2021. After retirement, he returned to FCPS as a substitute in custodial services and school nutrition services, and then he returned to transportation to work as a bus aide beginning in October 2021. So please keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers. And thanks again, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that. So on the consent agenda, there was a lot of recognitions. May is a very, very big month when it comes to recognizing all of the amazing and outstanding, outstanding staff that work here for us here in Frederick County. The first is Teacher Appreciation Week. So that will happen May 8 through the 12th, and I wanted to make sure that we recognize them prior to our next board meeting because it will be after that date. And I don't think words can describe and explain all of the hard work and the utmost outstanding staff, teachers that we have here in Frederick County. So definitely join me in congratulating them for all of their hard work and recognizing them, and that definitely, if I could have my way, I would probably give them the recognition for the whole year, but they only get a week. But thank you to all of our teachers because we will not be able to function without them. So thank you for all of our hard-working teachers. Next, we have School Nurses Day. So talk about another position that we need, and here's a little fun fact: there is no requirement to have a school nurse in our schools. And I cannot imagine having a school without a school nurse for all of the hard work that they do, for making sure they're keeping all of our students safe, to make sure they're keeping our staff safe, and just the day-to-day work that they do. Again, they are recognized in May, and I want to make sure that we acknowledge all the hard work that they're doing. So thank you to all of our nurses, appreciate all your hard work. Another group that we want to recognize is School Lunchero Day. So acknowledging our nutrition staff for not only serving our students, but making sure they are serving our students nutritiously. That is a very tough job, especially if you're trying to serve young students. Sometimes giving them the most healthy choices can be a little difficult, I'm sure as parents know, but they definitely do a really good job to make sure they're making the food not only nutritious but very good. And I hear that there is some very award-winning meals that our schools are serving, and I definitely need to get out there and try some of these lunches, which I will be doing in a very short time. So thank you to them and really appreciate all the hard work that they do. Lastly, we right now are in the season of celebration and success, and I have to say, this is one of the things that definitely attracted me about Frederick County in regards to all the recognition that we do for all of the hard work that all of our staff does. So beginning May 1st and continuing through May 29th, Frederick County Public Schools is inviting students, parents, teachers, and staff to share their celebrations and successes from the 2022-23 school year as part of the FCPS season of celebration and success. This is an opportunity to recognize and thank teachers, administrators, other staff such as nurses and nutritional staff who've made a difference for our students this year. You can find a link to the submission form on our website and Division Facebook, and then we'll be reporting out as we get those recognitions in. So it's a very good time of year to celebrate that, and there's a lot of pictures and a lot of celebration of all the hard work that our staff does. So we're really excited about that, to see that through the month of May. So I just wanted to make mention of that. So with that, if you give me two seconds, I'm going to head down to the podium, and I'm going to present the budget, and I'm looking forward to our conversation this evening. So just give me a second.
If we may add a few more seconds, typically, Dr. Hummer will rise the podium there and...
All right. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, community. I put together a proposed budget presentation. As you all know, we were fully funded last week at the Board of Supervisors meeting, so that's very exciting news. So we definitely have some decisions to make in regards to how we appropriate those funds. So I'm going to provide a quick overview of those budget priorities. I'm going to review your proposed budget, because if you recall last meeting, you did approve the budget, and we wanted to have a conversation about some of those items in the budget. And then we're going to review those recommended adjustments. So out of this, after I provide the information, I am recommending to the school board that you approve the budget for FY '24, so we can start moving forward with next steps. As I mentioned on Thursday, we spend a lot of time taking a look at numbers, taking a look at percentages, crunching a lot of different formulas, and I want to make sure that we don't lose the focus of why we're doing that, and it's to provide for our students and to make sure that we uphold our strategies that you have adopted back in November and December. And I want to make sure that we focus on our number-one asset, which is our people. We just got done talking about our great teachers, our nurses, our nutritional staff, our bus drivers, everyone that makes up Frederick County and makes us moving forward is definitely something we want to make sure that we focus on, and it was part of your budget priorities and your strategies. That's one of the things as I'm doing my entry plan, is that I'm getting out and meeting the staff, meeting our students, meeting the constituents of our community. That is the one thing that is definitely highlighted, and we have a lot of tradition, and we have a lot of great people here in Frederick County. We want to make sure that we keep that going. So as you all know, there were three budget priorities that you had voted on back in November, and we want to make sure that we were working through each of these budget considerations and these recommendations and adjustments. We wanted to make sure that we highlighted each of these areas. So taking a look at getting resources and supports for our staff and our teachers, making sure that we focused on those compensation packages for our staff to not only attract them, but keep our current staff, and then taking care of our current assets, so that we were being good stewards of our property and good stewards of the money that goes towards those assets. So as I mentioned, we did get the full increase that we requested in the 9.2, which I think is something that we all should celebrate, and thanks again to our Board of Supervisors. There was a lot of conversation in regards to where those funds were coming from in regards to the operating versus capital, but as you can see, the only one that is on this list that is on the non-recurring, which is going to be the buses. And that is something that we will have to have a conversation every year in regards to those items, but for the rest of the funds that we receive that is recurring, and it is something that, again, we need to celebrate because that money is going towards our operating budget, as we've been discussing. So as I mentioned, I presented the budget to you all back in February. Mind you, it was the first week on the job, and it seems like it was yesterday, and then you all had approved the budget last month. And in addition to the 6.8% average increase for our staff, or for our teachers, excuse me, which is really good, and the 5% for all of our other staff, as well as the minimum salary increase for our classified staff to $15 an hour, whereas other items, these were the positions that we had proposed to you, 21 total positions, and these were the positions as outlined. As we were having conversations in our Finance and Budget Committee meeting, as well as in our school board meeting, these were the highlights that we had discussed. These were the highlights that I had gathered in regards to having conversations with our school principals and other staff, and it was the mental health supports, staff incentives, and the compensation scales, and to make sure that we continue to highlight these in our budget, to make sure that we are, again, aligning ourselves with the budget priorities that you all had approved. So after that budget proposal went forward and you had adopted that budget, after conversations in our Finance and Budget Committee meeting, after conversations with my staff, there were a couple recommendations that I would like for you all to take into consideration. The first is removing the eligibility specialist, and I mentioned this on Thursday at the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, and the reason for removing this is I do have a plan for us moving forward with how we staff our buildings in regards to supporting our students with disabilities. And I believe that we need to focus more on providing that staff and support for our schools rather than a central location. And if I'm not mistaken, this was a position that we were going to be requesting year after year to get to an abundant number of these in the central office, and I want to focus more on getting that support in the building level, which, again, I have a plan for that moving forward. So we'll be talking more about that as we continue to talk about FY '25's budget. I also want to have a conversation of removing the behavioral specialists in techs. And the reason I want to have this conversation is as it come up in our Finance and Budget Committee meetings, having conversations with my staff, I think that moving forward down the road with more behavioral specialists is something that we'll need to take into consideration. But as I've mentioned in our Finance and Budget Committee meetings, as I've mentioned in having conversations with you all, I think we need to do a better job of providing more, again, staff at the building level and providing some additional proactive supports. And that is the tip of the iceberg as we continue to address the discipline concerns that we have in our schools, to make sure that we are supporting our students and their needs, but that we're also providing our staff and our teachers the resources that they need to meet all of the unique needs of our students. We have over 14,000 students, and each of them bring unique needs, and it is our responsibility to provide the services and supports for their students, for those students, so that they can receive a public education. And my recommendation is to transition those positions into four counselors and three social workers. I had conversations with our finance department and with Dr. Angelo to talk about what this would look like. Now, in order to get to a no more part or a sharing of counselors in all of our elementary schools, we need five. The reason I recommended four here is because I also want to emphasize the importance of adding more social workers, because currently we have one. We have two that are through Esther Funds that eventually go away, but we have one, and I would like to see us get to close to one social worker per building, but this will at least get us to one per level, as well as an additional social worker that can help at the elementary level because we have more elementary schools than our secondary schools. So it's a way for us to move forward in regards to those positions, as well as being more proactive with the level of support and services that we can provide our schools. We already, already have four counselors in the current proposed budget. Three of those are going to the high school level because of their large numbers, as well as other roles and responsibilities they have, as well as adding a counselor to DALL-J, which is very important because currently they do not have one. And then I also want to make sure that the other items that were brought up at the Finance and Budget Committee meeting were also considered by you all because these recommendations came from you. And again, this is your budget to have these conversations, and we want to make sure that we provide you the information to make an informed decision when approving the budget. So these were some items that were brought up. The teacher salary scale, so there were some questions brought up on Thursday. I had my finance department put together some documents for you all, which you have in front of you, in regards to those questions that came up on Thursday, so I'm looking forward to talking through those a little bit further. There was also a conversation about adding a CTEA liaison, which, again, I think that is very important for us to consider down the road in regards to how we're supporting pathways for our students, but it did come up in previous meetings, as well as last Thursday, as well as making sure that we are fully considering the staff incentives in regards to, again, not only keeping our staff but attracting new staff, and we are being competitive with neighboring school divisions. Now, if I can add, I think we are making a really big jump in regards to getting ahead of some other neighboring school divisions, because if you pay to have to pay attention to what's happening around us, there are other school divisions that are not going as high in regards to the salary increases. So this is something that's really going to help us in the long run, hopefully keeping our staff and then attracting new teachers as we continue to move forward with that. So again, that's up for conversation. I'm looking forward to talking about that further. So again, after our conversation later this evening, my proposal to you is that we adopt the budget, excuse me, the FY '24 budget with the amendments that I had mentioned, and then looking for further conversations later this evening.
All right, questions for Dr. Hummer about his report? We'll get into budget conversations later, but questions...wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Hummer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, that takes us to our interim Assistant Superintendent for Administration, Dr. Abbey.
It is my pleasure to introduce members of the Student Support Committee, who will present some information on security and activities in the district.
Sorry, Mrs. Renan.
Got to bring the podium down a little bit.
I'm just happy it wasn't that high when Joey was there. We wouldn't have been able to see them.
Mr. Shepherd, just hit the middle button on the...yeah, that guy there, the one on the bottom. Back up, there you go. And then you just have to exit out and open up your presentation.
Thank you. While Mr. Shepherd's getting that set up, Student Support Services is proud to present this evening on safety and security debrief for the board. Our presentation is just to provide some information to the board in regards. This is not a recommendation of an action for the superintendent at this time. So I'm going to let Mr. Shepherd get started, and then we'll tag-team a little bit here.
All right, good evening, Dr. Hummer, Chairman Monk, members of the board. My name's Logan Shepherd. I'm the Assistant Director of Student Support Services. We are going to talk about some of the safety and security measures that we take here in Frederick County Public Schools. First, and we've only got a couple minutes here, so I'm going to go through it pretty quickly, all right? But we do have the Raptor Visitor Management System, which is in place at every single school, as well as the school board office. This monitors for folks that come to our schools that may be on a sex offender registry or that are on the FCPS No Trespass List. So it really just keeps people out that should not be in our schools. Also through Raptor, we have our Raptor Emergency Management System. All of our drills now are run through Raptor. So where it used to be a little bit more difficult for us to take attendance and account for folks that are...or for students and staff during our drills, our teachers are able to do that digitally through an app that they have on their phone or on their Chromebooks. The SRP is the Standard Response Protocol. You'll see at each door in most buildings in each classroom, we have that SRP, Standard Response Protocol. Really what that does is it standardizes the approach throughout the division. It creates a common language of how folks are going to talk about emergencies that may be happening or drills that may be happening in schools. Also, along with that, we have the Standard Reunification Method, and that is a overall division plan that we will use to determine or predetermine a location for reunification should a school need to evacuate off-campus. All of that is...excuse me. The SRP and the SRM, we've gotten that through the I Love You Guys Foundation, which is a foundation that serves many, many schools and organizations worldwide. Moving on to some of our oversight teams, we have the Emergency Response Team. This will be a group of predetermined personnel that will respond to a school or an emergency situation, either at a school building or through a reunification plan. That team is a collaborative effort that is made up of folks from the school division, Frederick County Sheriff's Office, first responders, fire and rescue, lots of different groups. Behavioral Threat Assessment and Division Management Team, that is run through our office and Student Support Services. It is made up of the same team members that would make up a school threat assessment team, and what that is for is to do audits of our threat assessment process, take a look at threat assessments, and make sure that schools are doing that process with fidelity and provide feedback to schools. provide feedback to schools through that process. The Division Health and Wellness Team, that is done in conjunction with the Lord Fairfax Health District. They keep us up to date on different health trends, maybe if there are new requirements for registering for school immunizations, things like that, we meet with them periodically. We also have the Frederick County Sheriff's Office Quarterly Meetings, where we meet with folks, the SROs, as well as First Lieutenant Cornwell and Sergeant Travis Mitchell, just to discuss issues that we're seeing in schools and develop plans as to how we can address those with the Sheriff's Office. Okay. And moving on to our Behavioral Threat Assessment Management, we have a policy and a regulation that address this. They are 224P, which is the policy that states that every school will establish a threat assessment team and assess levels of each threat that is received towards a student, a staff member, anything like that. And then Regulation 224R, that is what establishes the actual procedures for leveling that threat that's received. I do want to go back. One thing that I did forget to mention on the last piece for the Division Oversight Teams, we are currently in the process of hiring a Safety and Security Administrator for, for the division. So that process is underway, and there will be a member of Frederick County Sheriff's Office a part of that team. So I know I went through that very quickly, but I am going to turn it over to Ms. Rittenhour for the rest of it.
Thank you.
All right. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. So we also provide supports for self-harm and suicide prevention. Just a shout out and reminder that the 988 is our number that you would contact for any kind of crisis intervention that you might have. So anybody looking and watching on tonight for students and adults, just a reminder, if you need help, 988 would be the number you'd call. Our school counselors collaborate with our SROs, and they each do independent assessments based on criteria to identify what supports we need for our students. We notify our families, work with our families. We have a number of community referral resources that we use. In addition to that, we create a support plan of case management. So we work with the students, we provide support, but we always ask students, what would help you? A plan shouldn't be something that you feel like is being done to you. It's being done with you, and we need the students and parents' input to help us create a good plan so everybody feels that they're getting what they need from our counselors and our school system. Information technology, a little bit about supports we offer. Ever since we went to one-on-one with our Chromebook devices, we have a Speak Up tip line. There's the number there. It's an anonymous tip line that anyone can use. And we also have a website that they can address that comes through our office that would monitor. We'd find the tip, and we'd look into and investigate it. Please make sure if you provide a tip, you give us enough information so we know what school it applies to or how we can best address it. We also have Gaggle. Gaggle, it is a monitoring system that applies to anything that Google would do. So if a student is doing something in Google, it'll alert us based on words that are used. Securely is a search engine that is used as a monitoring system. So if a student is looking something up, it also alerts us to that. Then we work with our school administration to follow up on those any time of day, holidays, weekends, to make sure our students are safe. I know some parents have gotten phone calls before, and it's just that we're checking to make sure everything's okay. We work collaboratively with our Frederick County Sheriff's Office. We're very appreciative of the support from Sheriff Milholland and from our Superintendent, Dr. Hummer, to recognize the support that school resource officers provide to us. We have 19. We also have Sergeant Travis Mitchell and First Lieutenant Jason Cornwell that provide supports to that program that we collaborate with on, on a daily basis. And it's a great resource to have. Our school resource officers, talking about our safety and support plans that we offer to our students, we often ask them, who's a go-to person that you would reach out into your building or your favorite teacher? Sometimes our kids name their SROs as their go-to person. So that just lets you know that relationship piece and making sure that our kids know what, what they're there for and how they can support them as well in our buildings. Some proactive measures, way that we like to be supportive in the well-being of our students, we create support plans, we create safety plans. We have Bright Futures, which I know many of you know a lot about Bright Futures. Our Bright Futures support makes sure that we are looking at our whole child's needs. In addition, we support our buildings with supplies, health supplies in the clinics, anything that they might need. Bright Futures can assist them for the overall well-being of our children. Lastly, we have access to mental health supports and resources. We have a number of referrals that we use through our community agencies. We understand that right now there is a high demand, as you all know, within the community. So we try to help navigate that a little bit for our parents and students, to provide them those supports that they might need. Just lastly, to wrap up, this was an informational agenda item from the superintendent this evening. And just to reiterate, we're very excited and grateful to have a safety and security person coming on board for the division to help oversee. There's a variety of pieces that each department has, but it'll be nice to have that central location. So we appreciate that agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rittenhour and Mr. Shepherd. Just wanted to reiterate that this was a point of information for all of us. No desire to have it other than just to share information behind it. And so I wanted to provide that context for the community that was listening as well, and for school board members to know that we'll receive an additional briefing in closed session, just to update us on some of the things that we're doing in our school system at a later date. All right. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is new business committee reports. And we have the first committee report, which is the Finance Committee. Mr. Hester?
Yes. Let me get the right one. Okay. The Finance Committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on March 23. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Camery addressed a board member question, reviewed upcoming important dates, and shared the FY24 budget information, and is located on the FCPS website. Dr. Hummer discussed existing items on the needs-based budget that was presented at the March 21 School Board Meeting, addressed the need for mental health supports in our schools, and how the FY24 budget may need to be adjusted to meet those needs. Other options for addressing the need for athletic trainers in our middle school and subject of a $15 per hour for classified staff and how to retain staff was also discussed. Board members and Dr. Hummer engaged in discussion about the need for mental health supports in our schools. Discussions included switching out behavior specialists and behavior technicians from the current FY24 proposed budget for social workers or counselors. Additional discussion from board members and staff was heard about developing strategies to address filling specific roles. Dr. Hummer reviewed superintendent spending limits in Policy 720P, Operations and Finance, purchasing, and discussed communications to board members regarding FCPS spending. Board members shared thoughts and concerns regarding the current superintendent's spending limit. Board members agreed that the topic requires full board discussion at a future date. The meeting adjourned at 4:50 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on March 23? If not, we did have one action item come out of the meeting, which is to recommend approval of the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on March 23, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion. Is there a second? All right. And there was a second. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I told you, I'm off this evening. Any question about the amendment, minutes of the meeting? All right. All in favor of approving the minutes? And if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Next is a spending limit presentation from the Superintendent, Dr. Hummer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So also, out of that meeting, it was requested that I present this information to the entire board to take into consideration for the current spending limit. So I'm going to go through what our current policy states and provide you with some information in regards to how information is presented to you all, and then open up for, excuse me, open up for discussion in regards to the superintendent's current spending limit. So this information is going to be presented to you all for information and consideration of the current policy. So this is how our policy currently reads. And as you can see, it is, it is very thorough at each stage in regards to each spending limit and each spending interval. There are numerous intervals that require quotes in regards to how we spend our money to make sure that we are doing it fiscally responsibly. And then there's also a formal solicitation for anything valued at $200,000 or more. So where it currently stands, which I think is currently in, up for consideration, is the current authorization of how much the superintendent can spend, which is $250,000. So anything over $250,000 would have to come to you for approval. Of course, it would have to follow these processes in regards to the formal solicitation and quotes. And then if it goes over that $250,000, you all would have to approve that. It would go through the Finance and Budget Committee, and then it would come to you all for full approval. I do want to make mention of, regardless of what direction we move in in regards to this particular policy, as I've mentioned to you all in many different venues, individual conversations, is communication is very, very important to me. And full disclosure is very, very important to me. And there are some things that I have the authority to do according to policy, or I don't need your authority very respectfully. However, as you've seen, I am providing you that information, because it is very important that we work on our relationship to make sure that you know what's happening on a day-to-day. And I want to make sure that that continues. So regardless of where we land, we are going to have each of these items are currently going to be in place. So you, as you can see, there is going to be bi-monthly reports for the listing of all vendors, expenditures, and amounts. There is going to be a statement of revenues and expenditures that will be funded monthly, a listing of all contracts valued at $100,000 or more monthly, a listing of all budget transfers. And then we will also, as you all know, we will be having more consistent Finance and Budget meetings. Now, you know, during budget season, we meet weekly, and once that starts to settle down and you adopt the FY24 budget, I think we have a couple months where we can adjust to it monthly, and then we will be back at it again weekly here before we know it. So, and then another piece too, that I wanted to mention, is we are going to be meeting more consistently with all of our committee meetings. So at Buildings and Grounds, we will be having meetings there, and we will be talking about the spending and how we are fiscally being responsible with all of our money. So regardless, you will be getting regular updates in regards to, to how we're spending this money. I think the other piece to take into consideration, it did come up at the Finance and Budget Committee meeting, is in regards to adding any, any additional layers in regards to how funding is being approved, is if we do lower any sort of amount, it could delay getting any sort of operational-type items done in a timely fashion. So just take that into consideration in regards to when you're considering this information, because I want to make sure that if there is any sort of safety items that are being taken into consideration, I want to make sure that we get that done in a timely fashion for our students and for our staff. So please, again, take that into consideration when you're considering this. And as I mentioned, this information was presented to you all for consideration in regards to our current policy.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Appreciate that. Appreciate the information from staff, Dr. Hummer, and the group. I know we talked about this in Finance Committee meeting, and as Mr. Hester shared, the thought was to bring it before the full board for discussion. I'll be open and say that I was the one that wanted some information around it and have talked with board members around potentially adjusting our policy. And I did have a few additional questions, Dr. Hummer. If we were to lower, and you talk about that threshold of doing business there, if we were to lower that threshold from $250,000 to a different number, would there be a recommendation to change any of the other thresholds of the purchasing policy that you had? And thinking about four quotes for X dollars or?
I don't think so. I mean, I would kind of look to Mrs. Camery and Ms. Anderson to see if there was any sort of adjustments there. I don't think so. Mrs. Camery, do you think? Yeah, I'm seeing them shaking their heads. I think the, I think up for discussion, based on, like you said, conversations and recommendations, it would just be that top dollar amount that would have to go before you. And like I said, regardless of what that number is, we still have to make sure that we have that process in place in regards to the solicitation, as well as looking at different quotes, to make sure that we are doing that thoroughly. So I don't think there would be any changes there. It'd just be that top dollar that would have to go before you before approval.
Okay. Appreciate that. And so I'm going to put forward a motion here and want to be clear, and I know you and I have talked about it, I've talked with other board members as well, I'm super appreciative of the communication that you've had with our board and in terms of the information that you've shared, not only about finance, but all the other areas around our school system, and so thankful for that over these past few months. But I'll put forward a motion, and I'll move that we amend Policy 720P, purchasing five Administration C and substitute $250,000 for $150,000 in both, in both instances there. So that, in essence, would set the superintendent's spending authority, change it from $250,000 to $150,000.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I'd like to make a motion to amend your...
So that, there's a motion there, so we need a second before we could discuss it or make any amendments. So is there a second?
A second.
All right. Mr. Comstock seconds the motion. Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend, while keeping in mind your $150,000 budget. I'm, I'm fine with that. However, to the superintendent's concern about safety in the schools, if it is a safety concern, I would like him to still have the authority to go up to the $250,000 limit.
So I can speak to that. I don't hear a motion, so maybe I'll speak to it a little bit before you do a motion.
My motion would be to keep it at the $150,000 limit, or move it to the $150,000 limit, unless there's a school safety concern.
Is there a second?
I'll second that for the point of discussion.
Okay. We have a motion second to amend the motion to add unless there's a school safety concern. And I'll let Dr. Hummer speak to it a little bit from my perspective. I looked through the financial reports that we receive monthly, and I don't know that we've seen any type of thing that would inhibit the, the forward progress of our school system in that regard. I agree with you around the, the safety concern. I know that our school board could convene immediately, if necessary, to provide a vote pending we have a quorum present. So I don't know that that would be a, a big concern from my perspective, just because the board would have the ability to hold a special call meeting, so long as there's a quorum that's available. Dr. Hummer, any thoughts or other board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins. Short.
So my thinking on this is, in a time of crisis, working safety on my daily job, things move quickly. And, you know, the, we hire the superintendent to make those quick, tough decisions, and when it comes to student safety, I would move that we would, or hope that we would make and entrust in him that authority to spend that $250,000 only on a safety concern.
Dr. Hummer, any concerns with the amendment and whether that poses any challenge for us?
I think that question kind of puts me in a tough spot, Mr. Chair, because I would like to stay at $250,000.
I'll just be, I'll share my, I don't know if that's something that we could, my concern about the amendment, to your point, Mr. Atkins, is not necessarily that there would be any reason for not going to 250. If there's a safety concern, I think everyone feels if there's a safety concern, we've got to spend, challenge. But how, what constitutes a safety concern is really, we're struggling there.
If I may, what I can add, though, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Atkins, for, for that sentiment, and I appreciate that, because it definitely will put us in a tough spot regardless, because we would have to set up the meeting, we would have to get documents together, and it would just add an additional layer regardless. And you're right, Mr. Chair, that we could definitely set up additional meetings. And that was a conversation that we had at this particular meeting, that if, if push comes to shove, then we would go back to two board meetings a month. And that's something that could be, be up for conversation. But I would like to add another layer. I think safety is definitely number one. That, that should be, be number one. But it is also going to add a, a delay in regards to any sort of instructional-type resources we need to get to our students, any sort of, of maintenance and, and building-type things that we need to move forward with, which sometimes we, we have to move quickly, especially with making sure that if there is any sort of safety that comes along with, with any sort of building repairs, it just, again, it just adds that additional layer. Again, we'll, we'll do whatever you all decide to do, of course, but just take that into consideration, because regardless if it's safety or not, it is going to delay us getting things done in an efficient manner. And that's, that's pretty much where, where we're at on that.
Additional comments around the amendment? Mr. Lake?
Yes. So just so I understand, we have a motion to amend, but the motion to amend still brings into play $150,000, correct?
Correct. The amendment is just...
Mr. Atkins? Okay.
Yes, Mr. Lake.
Okay.[1800.83] Okay, so a begin discussion, which something tells me we're going to have it again in a couple of minutes. We get all this information anyway, monthly, in a monthly report, no matter what the dollar amount, even when it's above 250,000. We also have a system that protects us with audits. We have RFPs that go out and ask for bids, which is monitored and regulated very tightly. We also have a sense that, I don't know, that, I guess, I would say that over my time on the board, when something has gone out for RFP and a contract has come back for consideration, I don't remember ever voting down a contract for reward. And understand that the only ones that we've ever voted on are above 250,000. So of all those ones that would be under 250,000, if we've never voted against one over 250,000, I can't ever imagine we'd vote against one under 250,000. And why would we review it in the first place if there was no chance of a negative vote? So I guess I'm just concerned that we are, Dr. Hummer's word, use of the word delay is key. Our board by design doesn't do anything quickly. And again, I say by design. We are transparent, we are open to the public, we advertise three workdays or whatever it is for a meeting. Depending on what the subject might be, it might go to Buildings and Grounds, it might come to Finance, and then it might come from those boards back to our board. You're talking over best-case scenario, a month's time, of trying to coordinate these, get these meetings going, get the subject before it, get all the information, and this is going to be over something under, you know, something that we've never voted down in the first place. So I guess, in short, I would say, I just don't see the need. I just don't see the need for this. I won't be supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. I'll just respond a little. I think that's the role of our school board is to provide oversight, and I would disagree from that perspective. But to the amendment, which is around school, Mr. Atkins, caveat around school safety, any discussion around that? All right, I will share my concern. I completely agree, Mr. Atkins, but my concern is just around what that threshold is there. But understand the reason for the amendment. So do we want to proceed to vote on the amendment as presented? So just the school safety portion adding that in? If there's no further discussion? So Mr. Lake would like a roll call vote, and we could start with you, Mr. Lake.
Mr. For the amendment regarding the school safety portion included?
Correct. Mr. Atkins' amendment.
No.
Mr. Lake?
Yeah, no.
Mrs. White?
No.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right, the motion carries, or the amendment carries. We now have an amended motion, which would change Policy 720P, five administration C to the superintendent. It would change 250,000 to 150,000 unless related to school, unless there's a school safety concern. Discussion around the motion as amended.
Yeah, I've got a few words.
Mr. Hester?
I'm on the same lines of Mr. Lake. You know, I would argue that there is a difference in oversight and micromanaging, and that's what I see this. We've never had a problem with, you know, the threshold before. We hired Dr. Hummer for a reason. We've got the utmost faith in Dr. Hummer. He's proven that. This came to fruition with the increased prices of the trailers for Shorando. He did the right thing, came back to us. But we're not here to micromanage the administration. Being a banker, 250,000, $150,000 goes nowhere these days. $250,000 barely does anything. And for a school system of our size, $250,000 for our superintendent to be able to make, like, decisions for the welfare of our children, our schools, to not disrupt the education, I cannot foresee us lowering it and it being the best thing for this school system. So to make an argument to your point, Mr. Monk, you know, there's a difference in oversight and micromanaging, and this is the only thing it's doing is micromanaging Dr. Hummer, and that's not what we're here for.
Thank you, Mr. Hester.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. White?
Thank you for your motion, and I appreciate your dedication to transparency. I think it's a valid concern, and we do serve as a check and balance system with our administration and for our constituents and for fiscal responsibility. I do believe that reducing the spending limit for our superintendent can become a safety concern if an emergency authorization was ever required. And I do think that if there has been statements made that our school board doesn't necessarily believe that there's anything wrong with the current spending or what has occurred, then this amendment to the current policy would be futile and doesn't necessarily make sense. So therefore, I will not be able to support that. And I am very appreciative of all the effort that Dr. Hummer has put in being transparent, increasing the meeting, sharing all the financial information with us. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. White. I'll share in just response to those, and don't believe this is a futile motion, just because I could think of a few instances outside of what you're sharing, Mr. Hester. And if we recall, I've talked to board members about this for some time. But over the summer, we were approached by teachers who had printers taken out of a classroom in multiple of our schools. And these are impact, these may seem like small decisions, but these are the reasons that people leave our school division. And we were told that costs around $300,000 if we wanted to pay for the ink for the teachers within our school system. But yet, we're not making decisions about things at that level. And so we've got folks that are leaving the division, and then the school board is being blamed for making decisions that they had no prerogative over. And then we've got a situation at Shorando High School where we've got potential trailers going on for a year and a half of the development of new trailers in which we had no idea about until it reached that threshold. I go to church and I see new pavement and $232,000 cost for new pavement, that that money could have gone to the classroom. And so I think this is an opportunity for the board to provide oversight. And I understand that you may feel that my definition of oversight is different, but get accused a lot of being in the weeds. But if somebody was tending to the garden, I wouldn't be in the weeds. And so from my perspective here, this allows us to make decisions that are going to better impact our teachers, to ensure that dollars are going to the classroom at that level to where we're not getting messages from teachers over the summer where dollars are not spent in what, my opinion, as an individual board member, is the most beneficial way for our students and our collective body. So we look at Loudoun County Public Schools. A lot of times, we like to model ourselves after that. They've got a $1.5 billion school budget. They have the same $250,000 threshold. And we look at Stafford County Public Schools, twice our size, has a over $400 million budget. They have 150,000, which is all I'm asking for here. So I don't think this is inhibiting anything from moving forward. I've looked at the list of the last six months of those materials, and I don't see something that should cause any type of grave safety concern. If anything, I think it's an opportunity for our board to be better informed about the spending of the division and to ensure our community that we're providing that proper oversight.
I'll have to ask, I'm not sure what board members you're talking to because you haven't talked to me about those specific instances. We've talked, you've mentioned that you wanted to lower it, but didn't give any explanation. So I would ask you that.
I'll share, Mr. Hester, if you return a phone call, you might get an answer to that. All right, any further?
If you call me, that's one thing.
Any further discussion on the policy?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comstock?
Thank you, sir. Dr. Hummer, I appreciate...
Yes, sir.
...the communication. I feel like you have been doing an excellent job of keeping us up to date on a lot of things that we were previously unaware of. So I appreciate your diligence and your efforts in keeping us up to date very much. The, you know, people have referenced our role as a board. While I feel like what you're doing is fantastic, and the communication we're getting on projects and on spending is fantastic, what raised this initially as a concern, and why I understand the concern for it, is that that situation at Shorando, we were unaware of the work going into that. We were unaware of that for a year and a half, two years, while it's, until it came before us. And that's not your fault. You brought it before us, and we appreciate that. I appreciate that. I think, though, our role as a board is to set policy, and while we have a great relationship with you, and you're doing the right things in communication, what happens when there's a different board or when there's a different superintendent? Policies set to kind of outlive all of us, I guess, right? And make sure that we're in a position where we can provide that oversight. I do agree, there needs to be a balance, and it shouldn't be micromanaging. And I have no intention, I don't intend anything as micromanaging. But I do understand the concern, and really, there's no reason why that project should have been happening at Shorando, and even the Buildings and Grounds Committee be unaware of it. So I agree with the sentiment, but I would also ask you, do you happen to know, and maybe Mr. Monk already has this data, I appreciate you sharing about a couple of their school divisions, but how many specific situations over the past several months or year would have come to us between that threshold of 150, or what you're requesting of 150 and the current threshold of 250? How many additional items would have fallen within that category that we would have needed to meet, to discuss, to then vote on before? And I don't know if anyone has that information handy.
Yeah, Mr. Comstock, thank you for sharing that. I do not have that, but I don't know if Mrs. Camery might have that information.
We actually did look at that because we thought it might come up. Basically, it's about six more would have come before you. But the difference that I'd like to really clarify is what's safety and what's an emergency? Because just to put before you, and I'm not trying to sway you the way, but if a chiller goes down in the middle of the summer, and we need to keep our kids, you know, cool as they're learning, it's those kind of things that this may hinder. So I just want to point that out. But regardless, it's about six that you're talking about between that 2 to 250.
I think our chillers have been coming in over 250, I think, recently.
Yes, so, yeah. Well, because we're doing big projects, yes.
So six projects, okay. Thank you for sharing that. I appreciate that.
All right, any further discussion before we proceed to a vote?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to amend your motion to set that dollar figure instead of the 150 you're proposing to 200,000, which would line it up with the formal solicitation bids. So at that point, we're approving expenditures that have gone out to the formal proposal.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made, properly seconded to amend the motion to change it from 150 to 200. Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins?
Would that still carry the $250,000 threshold for safety concerns?
Yes, sir. The amendment was only to change that $1 monetary amount.
Thank you, sir.
All right, any further discussion? All right, we'll proceed to vote. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Lake?
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right, motion, or the amendment passes. So now we have the motion before us, which is $200,000 with the concern for an emergency and safety there. Any further discussion? All right, we'll proceed to a vote. Roll call, please. Thank you.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right, motion carries, and we have provided an amendment to 720P. Next item on our agenda is the committee report, the Instruction Committee...
Finance.
Oh, Finance Committee, sorry. Finance Committee meeting on April 20th. Mr. Hester?
The Finance Committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on April 20th. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Dr. Hummer reviewed budget priorities. Mrs. Camery reviewed a recommendation to award a contract valued at $3,189,000 to Alonzo Hours Construction Incorporated as a result of IFB 23012 Millbrook High School Roof Replacement. Mrs. Camery reviewed recommendations about insurance awards. She also shared that staff recommends the employee health insurance rate increasing by 10%. Mrs. Camery stated that staff recommends awarding the contract for health insurance to Anthem. This is also, this also includes pharmacy vision reassurance services, Delta Dental for dental insurance, and Health Equity Incorporated for HSA administration. Mrs. Camery reviewed next steps for the FY24 budget. Mrs. Anderson reviewed teacher salary scale scenarios. Board members and staff engaged in discussion about the scenarios provided. Mrs. Anderson reminded board members of the budget before them to discuss how this budget would be modified prior to the April 25, 2023, school board meeting. Staff and board members discussed various options for mental health support positions, possibly funding a CTE liaison and additional incentive options for teacher retention. The meeting adjourned at 5:06 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on April 20th? We did have several action items come out of this. Recommend the full board award a contract of $3,189,000 to Alonzo Hours Construction Incorporated as a result of IFB 23012 Millbrook High School Roof Replacement Project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to award a contract valued about 3.189 million to Alonzo Hours Construction as a result of IFB 23012 for the Millbrook High School Roof Replacement Project. Any discussion?
Just a note, if I may, Mr. Chairman...
Mr. Comstock?
...that I believe there were nine bids for this project, if I recall correctly. And this is over what we had originally anticipated for this project, but this one was by far the lowest and most competitive. So thanks for the work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Any additional discussion? All right, all in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Okay, next action item was recommend the full board award medical pharmacy vision and reassurance services to Anthem Health Plans of Virginia, dental insurance to Delta Dental of Virginia, and Health Savings Account Administration to Health Equity Incorporated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to award the medical pharmacy vision and reinsurance services to Anthem Health Plans of Virginia, dental insurance to Delta Dental of Virginia, and Health Savings Account Administration to Health Equity Incorporated. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, another action item, recommend approval of the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on April 20, 2023.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Finance Committee meeting minutes from the meeting that was held on April 20. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I do have one last motion. I would like to make a motion to approve the FY2324 budget totaling $276,899,481. The budget includes school operating fund, $229,583,959, debt service fund, $18,927,199, capital projects fund, $1 million, school nutrition services fund, $11,596,340... capital projects fund, $1 million, school nutrition services fund, $11,596,347, school textbook fund, $3,389,393, INREP operating fund, $7,207,583, INREP textbook fund, $20,000, consolidated services fund, $4,500,000, private purpose fund, $675,000. The school construction fund is approved as a carryforward in the amount that equals the approved original project costs less expenditures and encumbrances through June 30, 2023. The school health insurance fund and special grants are approved for amounts based on cash balances as of June 30, 2023, plus receipts during the fiscal year. All outstanding encumbrances at June 30, 2023 are carried forward and are automatically approved for the 2024 fiscal year. Additional full-time equivalent positions included in the budget include two for INREP and an adjustment to the school operating fund from 21 FTEs to 18 based on the following recommendation. Remove one eligible specialist, three behavior specialists, six behavior technicians, and add four school counselors and three social workers based on Dr. Hummer's recommendation in ISO move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on Mr. Hester's, on Mr. Hester's motion there for the budget. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
You know, Dr. Hummer's amendment to the budget, I fully support that as far as teacher salaries and incentives to retain and recruit talented staff. I do believe we do need that CTE liaison, and with the disciplinary concerns that happen in our schools, to help out those teachers, I do believe moving forward with social workers and counselors will, you know, help out our staff tremendously and help curb some of those disciplinary problems.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Further discussion? Dr. Hummer?
Yeah, just want to make sure that you all, as I mentioned during my presentation, that at the meeting on Thursday, there was a recommendation to consider an alternate teacher scale in regards to how we were compensating different positions along that scale. You have it there in front of you. I think right now what I am proposing is the scenario B, if I'm not mistaken.
C.
Or C, excuse me. I apologize. Scale C, thank you. But again, up for conversation in regards to which scale you all are taking into consideration. And then, of course, we have Mrs. Camery and Mrs. Anderson here to answer any questions that you have. And then there was another document, if I may, Mr. Chair, that kind of broke down the number of staff in regards to their years of service and resignations, and we broke that down in regards to percentages, and as you can see, we're losing more staff in the zero to 10, and then more at the 21 to 42, and then in third place is 10 to 19.
Thank you, appreciate that, Dr. Hummer.
So just to clarify, scenario C is what is already included?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lake?
A word from either, I don't know, Mr. Hester or Superintendent about classified staff and what we did there.
So where we're at right now is we are at a minimum of $15 an hour, so we did increase to that, and that's where we, that original proposal was. I know it came up in regards to increasing that, and I think that is something that we definitely want to look at doing in the future, but right now where we stand, it's $15 an hour.
Okay, so in the budget, in the book that we'll be getting, we'll see those, we'll see those pay scales?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And just so, and Mr. Comstock maybe can clarify, but we, well, not clarify, but talk a little bit if need be. We've really had some discussion around the pay scales. We really are trying to work on those and break out a lot of the clusters, and I think we've made a lot of headway with scenario C, and it's not quite there. It's a, we've made a huge step in the right direction this year. You know, we've made a huge step in the right direction across the board with this budget this year, and I couldn't be more proud of what we've got in front of us. So just wanted to clarify that. I also wanted to make comment in regards, and we had a lot of discussion around this too. I know that we are increasing the insurance by 10% for the employer, but the, or employee. The employer, Frederick County Public Schools, is actually picking up a lot more of that 10% than the employee is. And so with the increase in salary this year, you know, it's offsetting it a little bit. I'm very proud of the pay increase that we're giving. You know, and we had this discussion at the, you know, finance meeting where, you know, over the past couple of years, we've been under, you know, percentage-wise, other increases across the state, across the nation, and so it's time that we do make a slight adjustment, but 10% is not a straight-up 10% for the employee. The employer's picking up a larger portion. So I just wanted to clarify that for those that might be listening. And did I say anything wrong, Mrs. Camery, or, okay? Just wanted to make sure we got that out there.
Mr. Comstock, I know as part of the committee meeting, there was some discussion around the teacher proposed scale. I'm looking what we received this evening on scenario D, which looks like that was in reference to some of our discussion there, and I don't know your particular opinion of that or the opinion of other board members. I think one of the things that I heard and I agree with during that committee meeting is that our years, really that 10 to 15 years of experience is where we see folks that are making the decision to leave the county and maybe go to another division or to leave the profession altogether, and so we wanted to make sure that those folks were receiving a salary increase that was greater than what the new teachers were. I have a little bit of concern with scenario C in that it provides kind of the exact same dollar amount to those folks, so we could have a brand, you know, a first-year teacher with the exact same dollar increase as someone who's been with us for 10 to 15 years. I don't necessarily see a scenario that reflects kind of what our hope was for that. Thoughts from the board members around the proposed?
I think the, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lake.
I don't know, it looks like the chart that they provided kind of spells it out that, you know, years zero through 10 is kind of where the focus needs to be, and I mean, I was at the meeting and I agreed, I agreed with Mr. Comstock's analysis, but this chart doesn't seem to prove that out, so I'm just, I think I'm good with a C.
Mr. Lake, let me, I guess, just ask clarifying. I'm looking at scenario C, and I don't know if we're looking at the same one.
I got you, I got you.
I see it as doing the opposite of that.
He says this chart isn't. That the focus is in the right areas.
But in scenario C, which is before us, the dollar increase is 3150 for that zero through 11, and it's a much greater increase down the road, so I guess I don't know that that holds true for scenario C.
I appreciate staff's work. Mr. Chairman, may I, sorry, I appreciate staff's work on coming up with some options for us. I very much appreciate your time and energy put into that. You know, I don't think option D is, you know, it doesn't achieve what we're setting out to do. There's, you know, doubling up of those steps. There's, you know, a longer time to max out the pay scale. So, well, there's doubling up. I just, and the increase is not as great for many of the people, so I don't think that's the, you know, I don't think that's the right one. My concern originally with C and with previously A and B had been making sure that the increase we're giving our employees is kind of reflective of the time and service that they've put into the, into the division, into the industry, into the field. And so, you know, that, on the previous scales, which they're not in front of us right now, but in some situations, the dollar figure and the percentage figure was much greater in different, in, you know, very low number of years' experience, and I didn't see that as a great thing. I didn't think that would send a good message to our people who've been loyal to us for 10, 20 years. So, you know, option C, I think, balanced that quite a bit in terms of it goes up over time, so the more experience someone has, the dollar figure raise they're getting increases. Originally, I had not noticed, and it was brought to my attention at that meeting, so I appreciate that, that the percentage difference varies because, you know, when you have a straight dollar figure raise for years zero through 20, well, when you calculate the percentage of someone with years zero or one at a $50,000 salary versus that same dollar figure over a $64,000 salary, it's a different percentage. So I think this is closer. I still, my concern is that, you know, someone who's been teaching for 15 years, kind of probably mentoring and helping some of these first, second, third-year teachers, is getting the same dollar figure raise as someone who there, you know, is brand-new to the industry and has not fully refined their craft. And so that, I think, is the bigger concern for me, and so I had requested that we find a way to just shift that a little bit, and I think option D was too big of a shift. It's not quite what I was looking for. I was looking for a little bit off of years zero through 10 and maybe a little bit off of the others to kind of beef up that 10 through 20 category. That was the intent, and I probably didn't communicate it clearly. So I just want to make sure that none of our employees feel like the raise they're getting is not reflective of the work that they have put in. So that was my concern with it. I think out of the options we have in front of us, scenario C is the closest and the best that we have. I know that balancing all of these different pay scales is very challenging as well because you may have categories where you have a lot of teachers and categories where you have a few, so it's not as simple as just taking a little bit of money here and putting it here, so I understand that as well. I do think, long-term, we have some work to do in terms of just revamping these pay scales altogether, and Dr. Hummer talked about pay bands and some other things so that we can really eliminate the steps, do things a little bit differently, and make sure that we are paying and giving our employees raises that are commensurate with their experience and that they deserve. So I think that this allows us, option C allows us to appreciate our employees. I wish it were just slightly different, but the options we have in front of us, I'm okay with this one. So, sorry that you had to hear from me for so long.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Comstock. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
While I'm appreciative of our, our teachers' pay scale and the work that's went into it, I know trying to balance everything and make all those stakeholders happy and kind of retain these teachers is great. We are still in a bus driver shortage and classified staff shortage, and I, it's my hope that we will look into that next year for that budget and really hammer down, I said that last year, and I'll say it again this year, these are the same people who have the first and last touch with those kids, you know, they can make or break that day. These are the same people who make sure the wheels on the bus go round and round. They're the mechanics out there, they're the people who are diligently working throughout our hallways to keep, you know, the bathrooms clean, the floors swept, and provide instructional aid. So, you know, my hope is next year we will do a little bit better for them. Thank you.
Mr. Atkins.
I, I think we all are in agreement with you on that. We had some major discussion around that, and, you know, the dollar figure, that was, that equates to a higher starting, and it is on our radar for next, you know, from a personal level, I'm only one, you know, we want to raise that. I am very happy of where we've gotten now, and given the dynamics of the budget season last year compared to this year, you know, we were, we didn't want to, we just couldn't take that, so, but from a personal level, I'm right there with you.
Understood.
Additional comments?
Yeah, I would agree, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Hester. I guess my frustration is we say that every year, and we don't see much change for it, and that's where I'm growing a little disappointed in that.
Give Dr. Hummer a shot.
I appreciate, and I know Dr. Hummer and I have talked about it, but at the same time, we as a board have to provide direction from a financial perspective, and so it's great to give Dr. Hummer a shot, and he and I have talked about it, but our bus drivers and our nutrition workers and our custodial staff aren't going to wait 12 months just because we want to give someone a shot. We've got a 227-plus or-ish million-dollar budget before us, and, you know, just looking at FTEs for bus drivers is 199. If we were to provide a bonus to them this year or positions that are hard to fill, we look at those in our March 3 meeting, I mean, we could see exactly all of those positions there. I feel that dollars could be used in a more advantageous role for our staff if we fill the positions that are currently vacant. Folks are always saying, okay, we're shorthanded to this nature. Well, we've got FTEs, at that point, it was near 80, and I know it's below that now, that need to be filled, and so if we took a more creative approach of providing some type of incentives for those roles that are hard to fill, I think our staff would see relief in that area, or if we worked to provide stipends. I know before I'd put forward a motion to have some type of benefit in terms of basic rec for them, and it sounds like there's no appetite from the board to provide additional benefits to staff in that way. When we look at the ROI on that of about 500,000 and the impact that it would have to potential hires, we look at national studies, that's something that could have had a potential large impact for our community comparative to 1% price or 1% salary initiative. So just disappointed that we are really kind of in that same boat. Super appreciative that the third time's a charm for the CT position. I think we're going to get that in there, and looking forward to the work that they do. Appreciative of the 6.8 for our teachers. I think it is well-deserved. It's something that will help with some of that recruitment and retention, but I don't know that dollars are the only thing. When I, when I speak with teachers, they talk about student behavior, they talk about some of the other benefits, and so I think we'll find ourselves in the next few years in this exact same place. So with that said, I would move that we strike the athletic trainer, the two athletic trainer positions, which would total 179,000 for middle school, and utilize those dollars for an incentive package for hard-to-fill positions. And that is a motion.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion around the amendment or the motion?
I'll just share, and I know I've talked about this before, but it is hard for me to understand when I've not heard it from anyone other than within this proposed budget that those athletic trainers at the middle school level are our highest priority within this school division. Every person that I talk to that serves in a school talks about bus drivers, they talk about instructional aids, nutritional staff, and I just feel that these dollars could be better spent within our school and support those folks that are on the front lines impacting students.
Dr. Hummer?
Yes, sir.
If we removed those two athletic trainer positions for the junior high, how much money would that free up to maybe give a, some sort of bonus or incentive to those classified staff in those hard-to-fill positions?
The two athletic trainers? Well, we would only get us, was it 130?
170,000.
$170,000, which would, is just the tip of the iceberg in regards to how much money we would need to impact those scales.
You know, $170,000, you said?
Correct.
We, we don't have 170 bus drivers, do we? I think we could take.
We have 199.
199, so we could all give those folks almost $1,000 each if we eliminated those two positions as a bonus for sticking with us here at Frederick County. Could we not? I mean, would it be close?
Again, I think the budget's been proposed to you all in regards to what I was proposing for adoption, so whatever it is you all want to change and adjust, that would be up to you in regards to that total dollar amount. So if it wants to go towards incentives of, as Mr. Monk had mentioned, in regards to filling hard-to-fill positions or to go towards our classified go towards our classified staff, particularly bus drivers, then we would make that work if that is the will of the board.
And to speak a little bit further, Mr. Chairman, I know that, you know, earlier this budget season, you know, Ms. White, you talked about getting that bumped up to $17 an hour, and I totally agree with you on that. Mr. Hester just spoke to that about trying to show appreciation on that. You know, like you just said, Mr. Monk, I do believe, you know, there is no need for two athletic trainers in the junior high when we could really show appreciation to those classified staff or hard-to-fill positions. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. And it was also discussed in committee that we could provide a stipend for folks, potentially nurses or others, that would fulfill that role as well.
I do have.
Mr. Hester.
I will be voting no against this. Not that in regards, we discussed this at Finance Committee, and we've had these discussions, but coming from somebody that played sports in middle school and high school, and the increased issues of concussions and how that affects kids on a long-term basis, having had five concussions myself, three of which were in middle school and high school, it is very much needed. I'm not sure if you played sports or not, but it, concussions and head injuries are becoming more prevalent, and once you get one, it's easier to get the second one, and the third one, and the fourth one. And we've made great strides with staff and pay scales and everything across the board this year, that there's no way I can, if we went through the process, two athletic trainers was asked for, you know, from the start through our process, and that's what is being discussed, and we've been discussing it from the beginning and saying that we need it, you know, I just cannot go against not having athletic trainers. And, you know, having seen the repercussions of head injuries and the increase from year over year on how many kids and who's getting them, you know, we definitely need those athletic trainers.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. I would share, I agree. It's been discussed from the start, but so have the behavior specialists and technicians that are removed. I'm excited. I know my amendment failed before it went to the Board of Supervisors, but excited that we officially removed them as part of the budget here. Once this moves forward, the same can be said for the social workers. Up until I suggested that we include new social workers into the budget, no one on the board was aware that we only had a few, one social worker, two that were hired by Esser. So, I guess my concern is that the budget seemed to prioritize things such as the middle school athletic trainers that are not what our folks on the ground are asking for, and so that was my point in that. So, we've got a motion and a second for an amendment there. Any further discussion?
All right, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of removing the two middle school athletic trainer positions and utilizing those dollars to fund hard-to-fill positions in incentive programming. You want to do a roll call? Mr. Lake, we'll start with him, so.
All right. Mr. Lake?
No.
Mrs. White?
No.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
No.
Mr. Hester?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right, motion fails. We have the regular motion before us. Any further discussion?
Want to repeat that?
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't provided with a copy of it, but Mr. Hester has a copy.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Oh, Mr. Lake.
It only took you, yeah, it only took you 18 minutes.
I might be able to do it in 17 minutes.
Further discussion?
Just before we vote on this, you know, we had asked Dr. Hammer to take another look at it, and he came back with additional recommendations, and so that's what we have in front of us, and so, you know, I appreciate that, and I know that moving forward, those are things that are on his radar that he's going to prioritize. We do have the $15 minimum, you know, starting wage now per hour, and some other, you know, raises, overdue raises that are probably not enough in those categories, I understand, but it's at least a step in the right direction, and I know that work will continue, and perhaps if there's an opportunity, if there are unfilled positions and extra funds, you know, he can always come back to us and ask us for something, so.
Yep.
May I say something?
Ms. Martin?
I think we as a board and working with Mr. Dr. Hammer, that we need to concentrate a little bit more on how we're going to appropriate the right funds to raise the salaries where they are more appropriately received by the public. That means people who are applying for jobs and people that have positions here so that they will stay and that they feel that they're getting paid appropriately. So, we need to really dive into it just a little bit more, because you've got to have, if you don't have bus drivers, you don't have children here. If you don't have children here, then you don't need teachers. You know, it's kind of a vicious circle. You need everybody. We need to pay them what they need to be paid, but obviously, we have to work within the budget that we have. That's it.
Thank you. Further discussion?
All right, as I said, I am appreciative and support the teacher salary increase, support the removal of the behavior specialists, and, but I just feel as if there's other positions, including the specific counselor roles and the athletic trainers, in which we're a little short-sighted on what could benefit our folks on the ground. So, I will not be supporting this, but we can move forward if there's no further discussion.
All right.
Can I just, I'm sorry, did you?
Yeah, please. And just to be clear, we're moving forward with scenario C and the teacher scale. I just want to make sure we're clear on that motion. Thank you.
And we are moving forward with the original motion as presented by Mr. Hester, and who seconded that motion, to be clear?
I did.
Thank you. Roll call, vote?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
No. All right, we have a budget. Congratulations. Next item on our agenda, if I can find it.
Instruction Committee.
It's Instruction Committee. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
The Instruction Committee met on April 6 at the Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public School Administration Building. The meeting was called to order at 3:00 PM. A copy of the meeting minutes have been provided to board members. The annual Carl D. Perkins Plan reviewed, as well as the local special education plan. Dr. Hammer also reviewed amending the school calendar for 2023-24 to add transition days for kindergarten, sixth, and ninth grade students, and adding additional professional development days for new hires. The meeting adjourned at 3:58 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the meeting are included in the meeting minutes provided to board members. Are there any question from board members about information shared at the Instruction Committee meeting held on April 6? Forgive my tongue twisters there. Okay, so we do have some action items coming out. Number one, recommend approval of the Carl D. Perkins Annual Plan for 2023-24.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Perkins Plan for 23-24. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Second action item is recommend approval of the local special education plan for 2023-24.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the local special education plan for 23-24. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Dr. Hammer?
Yes. So, Mrs. White, before you jump into the calendar, I do want to provide some context to that. I know we did present this at the instructional meeting, but for the public and for the rest of the board, I want to make sure that we're all clear on what I'm proposing, and I do have two additional amendments I want to add to that as well. So, as you all know, when I first started, and I do want to commend the Calendar Committee for all the hard work that they've done, but my first week, the calendar was pretty much already proposed and moving forward, and after taking a look at it, there were some recommendations that I want to take you all, for you all to take into consideration in regards to adjustments. So, the first one is currently how the calendar stands, there is only one day for new personnel. And as we have talked about, and I can definitely hear each of you in regards to how we're supporting our staff and keeping our staff and making sure we're providing them with the right level of support, I do want to add two additional days for all of our new personnel, and that will happen a week prior to when teachers come back. We also want to take a look at adding an incentive for those new staff coming in, but based on how their contract currently fits, it's not a contractual concern, because they're only currently working 194 days, even though it's a 200-day contract. But I definitely want to take a look at incentivizing that, which I've tasked the Finance Department to look into, which was roughly about $30,000 to $40,000, if I think that estimate was correct. We'll also look at adding a stipend for our mentors as well, because that is part of that process. Moving forward, for FY '25, I definitely want to take a look at a week-long. We weren't able to do it this year, because there is a summer leadership academy that Monday for new, for all administrators. It just wouldn't have worked out for that particular week. So, adding those to two additional days to help support our staff, to get right off, to get off on the right foot, I think is definitely in our best interest to do that. I've been working with Instruction and HR to do that piece, so I wanted to add that piece. The next one, as we've been talking a lot about behaviors and thinking outside the box in regards to how we are structuring our school year and our school day, there has been some neighboring school divisions. I wish I can patent this, but I cannot, but there's been some neighboring school divisions that have done this, what's called a transition day. And for rising kindergarten and rising sixth grade and rising ninth grade, not only are you rising to a new grade, but you're also arriving at a new building. And there's a lot to not only get used to as a student, but as a staff member, there's also a lot to get used to. And for our kindergarten parents, sometimes we have to peel the parents off the students, not the students off of the parent. So, we definitely want to make sure that we give them that opportunity to let their child go to public school, and to have that opportunity to come into the office, walk into the building. So, it will allow us to do that, because there will be a lot less traffic in our school. So, it really helps with that. Another aspect to this is it will allow for transportation to get acclimated to new routes, to the buildings that maybe they're not familiar with for drop-off and pickup, and it just really helps for them to get used to that with less traffic on the road in regards to buses. So, this will essentially be the first, which was the first day of school. This will now be a transition day, and then the following Tuesday will be the first day of school for all other students. We do have an allowance in regards to our hours, so if we do add this day, it will not impact us in regards to meeting that requirement of 180 days or 990 hours. So, this would not impact that at all, and I think this will be a good step in the right direction for us. As well as, I do want to take a look at adding some additional days off for staff. After taking a look at the calendar and hearing from feedback in regards to the flex days, and I've heard a lot of differing opinions on doing away with those days, I think what I definitely heard from both administrators and staff is we can definitely afford to take some additional days off with not impacting our hours. Again, it's either 180 days or 990 hours. We do go over those hours, because we have some cushion and flexibility there for snow days and other things as they come up. So, the two additional days that I would like to add, the first is November 6, that is a Monday, and there was an intentionality in regards to me picking these days. So, that is, we do have a long October, and then I know that's getting ready for that fall holiday there and Thanksgiving, but it does allow for that additional day in November, so they would have off Saturday, Sunday, and of course, that Monday. It was a professional day, but now it'll be a day off for all staff, so all offices will be closed. The other day is in February. So, February's a long month. March is a long month. We have spring break at the end of March, but adding an additional Friday on February 16, and that will essentially give all staff a four-day weekend. So, that'll be a nice little pre-spring break, and again, we do meet our hours, so it will not impact us in regards to that. So, again, two reasons that we're doing this, we can afford to give these days, and I think this is another incentive for not only the increases that we're giving to our staff, we're giving additional days off, so hopefully this will attract and keep our staff, keep our staff happy. So, that's what we're currently looking at, and I'm looking forward to working with the Calendar Committee for next year, because there's other recommendations that can definitely wait till FY '25, but I think there's definitely some room for adding some additional items into the calendar. But for right now, those are my three recommendations.
All right. Thank you.
So, we would just add on those amendments?
Yes, please.
So, amendment to the recommendation, considering updating the 2023-24 school calendar to include?
So, we don't have the motion on the floor just yet, so if you'll just share what the recommendation is, and then, and then we can amend it, amend it there. That works.
So, recommend consideration of updating the 2023-24 school calendar to include two additional days for new professional orientation and making August 14 a transition day for kindergarten, sixth, and ninth grade students.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded to update the 23-24 school calendar to include two additional days for new professional orientation, making August 14 a transition day for kindergarten, sixth, and ninth grade students. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins?
Like to make a motion to amend the calendar to include the days the superintendent has asked for staff to be off?
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded to amend, to add two additional leave days or holidays for staff. Any discussion around that? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in?
Just for clarity, we are voting on those two days right now.
We're voting on the amendment. Yes, sir. So, just the November 6 and February, I believe it's the 16th, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Just that is what we're voting on, and I will share, very appreciative to Dr. Hammer and staff for looking into it. He talked about the voices of a different side. I know I was one that was pestering and shared some thoughts around that, so appreciate coming to this solution. All right, all in favor, signify of the amendment, just the two days. Mr. Lake, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, motion carries. The amendment carries. So, now we have the whole calendar to include the additional days for new professional orientation for staff, as well as the transition days for kindergarten, or the transition day of August 14 for kindergarten, sixth, and ninth grade students. Discussion around this?
With the amendment, with the two.
With the amendment of the two days, correct.
We're ready.
Okay. I did have one question, and failed to ask you this, Dr. Hammer. The new professional staff, are we talking about new to the division or new to the profession?
Mr. Monk, that's actually a really good question, and as I've had conversations with each of you, I'm really big on being intentional. So, it is for all new staff to come to the division. However, what professional development we will provide, we'll make sure that we are intentional with what that professional development looks like. So, for new staff to the profession, our professional development will be geared towards them and tailored, and then for staff that are new to Frederick, but not necessarily new to the profession, we'll make sure that we take that into consideration in regards to the professional development we provide. And on those three days, just to help with context, the Wednesday and the Friday, they will be in their buildings. They will be working on onboarding, working with their mentors or administrator, and then on that Thursday of that week, that's where we'll do a kickoff. We'll do the red carpet. We'll do the band. We'll provide them some lunch, and then we'll also provide them a conference style-type rotation and support, and that's where we'll make sure we tailor the professional development that we provide them.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer. I know I'm super excited about each of these adjustments there, and thank you for, as you mentioned, the outside-of-the-box kind of approach to it, and think it'll help in a variety of ways of retention, but also some of the behavior challenges as well, so. Further discussion? All right, let's proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
No.
No, okay. Motion still carries. All right, next.
Recommend approval of the minutes from the Instruction Committee meeting held on April 6, 2023.
Second.
All right, motion's been properly seconded to approve the minutes of the Instruction Committee held on April 6, that meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we have a minutes approved. Next is the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Yes, sir. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on April 17. The meeting was called to order at 1:00 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Christman reviewed the status of the capital projects list to include projects funded by Esser II and Esser III Funds. He also reviewed Boy Scout, Eagle Scout projects taking place at Greenwood Mill Elementary School and Jameswood High School. Mr. Lee briefed the committee about the Route 7 access project. He stated that VDOT is proposing changes to the two intersections in front of Milbrook High School and Red Bun Run Elementary School. These changes are being proposed to improve safety and decrease travel times along the Route 7 corridor. Mr. Christman informed the committee that the Frederick County Middle School will be housing the Catholic Diocese of Arlington work camp from June 12 to July 1. Gainesboro Elementary School will house any work camp overflow. Mr. Christman also updated the committee on the summer projects to be completed by the Facility Service Mr. Christman also updated the committee on the summer projects to be completed by the Facility Service Department and the meeting adjourned at 1:43 PM. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on April 17th? All right, we have one action item, and that is to recommend approval of the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on April 17th, 2023.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on April the 17th. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. All right, next on our agenda is the first reading of Policy 116P. Bylaws, board minutes, recording, votes, and tie votes. Dr. Hummer? Dr. Hummer, I know this is our first reading, but any comments on 116P bylaw amendment?
No, no comments.
All right. We'll consider it as completed the first reading there. Next, we'll move to Policy 323P. Instruction acceptable computer use, system use. Dr. Hummer? Any thoughts before we proceed to any adjustments?
Nope, nope. Each of these policies are outlined before you. I think there were some red line adjustments that were provided there. So please take a look at those and let us know if you have any questions. Since it's not a bylaw, we don't have to have a first and second reading. So if there aren't any questions, then they could be approved this evening, and they will go into effect starting tomorrow.
All right, is there... What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would amend Policy 323P. Instruction acceptable computer system use as presented before us.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend Policy 323P. Instruction acceptable computer system use as recommended by staff. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of amending Policy 323P. Instruction acceptable computer system use, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. It is amended. Next is Policy 332P. Instruction college and career readiness.
So again, the policy is outlined before you. There was very minor adjustments to this one. But if you could just take a look, I think this one had the legal requirements there that were added. And if you have any questions, we can answer them for you.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would amend Policy 332P. Instruction college and career readiness as recommended by staff.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to amend Policy 332P. Instruction college and career readiness as recommended by the board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. It is amended. Policy 567P. Personnel acceptable computer system use.
So if you take a look at this one, there's a lot of similarities. And the first one is instruction, and this one's personnel use. So that's why there is a lot of similarities, but there is a difference.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would adopt the amended Policy 567P. Personnel acceptable computer system use.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to amend Policy 567P. Personnel acceptable computer system use. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of amending the policy, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, it is amended. Next, board member comments. Are there any?
Mr. Chairman? I think we might have missed the enrollment report. Did we ever, did we skip through that?
That's just part of the consent agenda now.
Just part of the consent agenda? Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. White.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Appreciate that. It is in board docs. If we want to review that and have any questions, feel free to share. Board member comments, Mr. Hester?
I'd just like to take a moment to, again, like I have for the last couple of weeks, thank Patty Camery, Kristen Anderson, the Finance Department for all the hard work you guys have put into working on this budget and also all the other staff. There's been a lot of hard work that's been put into this budget. And we'll probably, we'll be starting on next year's budget here within a month or so. So with that all said, there's just so much work that's done behind the scenes, you know, getting the information. I do believe that this year's budget process went through a little smoother, and we got full approval. So I just really want to thank those that, you know, are involved with the process from start to finish. Because if it wasn't for you guys and the hard work you've put into it, we wouldn't have landed on such a great budget that we've got. So I just want to thank everybody. You know, and also want to commend, again, we saw a student tonight with the art project, and there's just so much going on, good stuff going on, you know. I see postings of athletics, of our FFA, of our band, of, you know, end-of-the-year plays. We've just got a lot of good stuff going on in this school system, and it's something to be proud of. So thanks for everybody's hard work that you put into those activities also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hester.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins?
Kind of want to echo Mr. Hester's sentiments. You know, there's a lot of people do work really hard on these budgets. And I'd like to thank the Finance Committee for, you know, meeting so often. And, you know, one of the good things that I've seen about our Finance Committee meetings and all of our other committee meetings is we're getting that transparency. Those are all cast on YouTube for people to, you know, go in and watch. So it does help with the transparency on that. And I'd like to thank the board. While we all have different opinions on where money should be spent and how it should be spent, I think this year compared to last year has went a lot smoother. You know, as far as reaching out to each other, asking questions, and actually coming together to work on stuff. So thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. White?
Just want to recognize and show appreciation for all of our teachers. It's very clear that with each passing year, they're not just teachers, but they're IT specialists, they're counselors. They help our students in so many ways. So thank you so much. There's not enough words. Nurses, the same thing. They're pharmacists. They're making sure the kids get their medicines, whether it's asthma, insulin, what have you. They're there to comfort the students, you know. I know that I used to run to the nurse's office with a tummy ache, and it was not necessarily that. And so they also provide much-needed support to our students. And finally, the act of feeding the hungry is truly a heroic act. And for our school nutrition professionals, we all know that there's a considerable amount of students that are served free and reduced lunch. And so thank you to each and every one of you. And I don't know if anybody saw the Legally Blonde production at Millbrook High School, but it was stellar. I have never been to a musical, and they made me feel like I was on Broadway. Those kids are so talented. They had my family and I singing the tunes for the whole entire week. So that brought me a lot of joy to see that in action, and it's just a testament to the great things that we're doing here in Frederick County.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Agree, our students at Jameswood, and the name of the musical escapes me, but it was phenomenal as well. We've got some really talented stu...
Little Shop of Horrors.
There we go, Little Shop of Horrors. They did phenomenal as well. We've got some really talented students throughout the county. And agree, I once heard that if you need a day or a week of appreciation, then it's likely that you probably don't get paid enough in your role. So appreciate all the work that our nurses and teachers and school nutritional staff are doing as well. And to echo the sentiment, appreciate the healthy debate of the board. I think we had a successful budget season this year and looking forward to supporting our community and stakeholders and FCPS through that, so. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
All right, Mr. Atkins?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all right, all in favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.